Thanks. Awesome, awesome. Yeah, all looks good. Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Saw Kaden at the softball game.
How are the girls doing?
I left about eight minutes ago and it was a bit ugly. It was, I think it might have been like five or six to zero.
Oh, no.
Yeah. That team's good. I don't know if they beat, I don't know if they, I know they played them in the regular season because I've seen them up here before. I don't know if they beat them or not.
Who were they playing?
Franklin Tech.
Okay, that's a big school, isn't it?
It is a big school. Yep.
They probably have a ton of players and I know our softball team is pretty small.
Yeah, yeah, and they pull kids from all over Franklin County, so I suspect that there's a decent number of girls who play softball from when they're like six and seven that also want to be vocational students when, when the time comes and they get to that age because of the reputation of the team.
That makes sense.
So have you made any, any career choices? Are you still? Man.
Sorry, Jack, it's recording again.
Yep.
Hi, Steve. Hey, Jack.
Okay, so we're waiting for up there's Jose.
He's here.
Curtis. I'm gonna text him just in case.
He's always really good at being super punctual.
Four fifty-nine and a half.
Always punctual.
And he hasn't connected to audio yet, so we can.
Oh.
This is being recorded. He can listen to it later because of course that's what we all do as soon as the meeting is over.
I play it on repeat until the next meeting.
Um, Jake, are you waiting for anybody else?
No.
Okay, um, as soon as it turns five, I'll call the meeting to order because Ursula will not be here.
Ursula's not gonna be here.
Right. Okay, here we go. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, five P M. This meeting is taking place virtually. It will be broadcast on Willie Net TV Channel thirteen oh two and available on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube channel within twenty-four hours. If we could call the role, please alphabetically by last name.
Bo in here.
Connie here.
Constantine here.
Elfenbein here.
Green here.
Miller here.
Thank you. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectation and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. First, uh, next on our agenda is the field and track project owners, project manager, review and approval of and recommendation by finance committee. So is this you, Carrie?
Yeah, so it's, it's like a bunch of us, but I'll start us off. So the finance subcommittee met yesterday. We were all present along with Joe and Jake and Rob Winok from the Mount Greylock administration and we interviewed two candidates. One, the first one was Skanska at two P M. and then Colliers at three P M. We've shared with you the notes from the finance subcommittee, the draft minutes, and we've shared with you PowerPoint presentations from each of the companies. Those were presented to us in response to a set of questions that we posed in advance. We had planned to actually ask the questions and have sort of more conversation. I think that was what I had in mind, but both companies chose to actually respond with presentations. There was opportunity to ask additional questions and to take some questions from each of the firms as well. We then had a vote to rank the, the firms, the candidates. And that vote was unanimous, so that is now a motion on the floor of the school committee that only requires a second. So would you like us to repeat that motion for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. So that motion was made by Ursula, seconded by Steve, and as I said, it was voted unanimously and that was to rank the two candidates in the order of Skanska first and Collier second. The process is that, well, I'll wait for a second and then I'll talk about the process.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, so the process here is that the school committee has the opportunity to ask questions or make comments and we would then vote to proceed into negotiations with the top ranked candidate, whichever is the top rank of the school committee. So the finance subcommittee has made a recommendation. It is now a school committee decision based on that recommendation and anything else you want to bring into the mix. Joe, do you have anything to add to that? Joe put the whole thing together, so many thanks to Joe. He worked with both candidates to arrange times and to, you know, get their materials in order and all that kind of thing. Well, it looks like Steve has a comment and then maybe we'll go to Joe.
Well, I can go, I can go up to Joe, that's fine.
Okay. Joe, do you have some?
The only thing that I would add is that once the, the one-two ranking is done, the school committee should determine how it wants those negotiations with the top-ranked candidate to proceed, whether they want to charge the superintendent and business administrator with that, or if they want the finance committee to do it or somebody else, but that would be the next thing after that, that I would love to make sure we get done tonight as a part of this agenda item.
Okay, thanks. Steve?
So that's why I wanted to go up to Joe. That was one of the things I wanted to bring up. The other was to just reiterate that, you know, we are very fortunate. We had two such, you know, well-qualified companies. And it was, you know, a pleasure talking to both of them. And the other thing is when we asked additional questions, one of the questions I asked was, you know, could they help us in discussions on how many lanes do we need for track? And they did say that that was something that they could assist with, and I heard that nine lanes might be needed. We've previously been talking about six or eight. So I just want to just, you know, put this out there to make sure we're constantly aware of making sure that what we put in is going to meet all of our needs.
Jose.
Thanks, Carrie. I was just hoping to hear, to hear from the finance committee. Some background into the ranking that you've put forward to the full committee. So, uh, you know, in short, why did you rank Skanska higher than Colliers? I think it's how you pronounce it.
Steve, do you want to speak to that or?
I, I can speak very briefly. It was extremely hard because they were both qualified. They both really, you know, did their homework. I thought Skanska did, you know, just a little bit more in terms of understanding and, you know, going back to previous minutes, looking up and you're coming in with conversations about, you know, the water issues and, you know, the pump issues and the well issues and just being, you know, really aware of where we've been and just helping us to get there, but I would be comfortable with either one.
I think another thing that Ursula pointed out was that the folks who would be working with us directly are quite local. They live in Pittsfield. The project manager lives in, would, if we were to hire them, lives in Williamstown, is very familiar with Mount Greylock, has kids who have gone through Mount Greylock, who are athletes. So they've been following the conversations and are very aware of the nuances of the discussion around the, in the history of the, the track and field project. Yeah, Jose.
Yeah, just summarize, I think what I've heard is that both firms were offered sort of competitive proposals. Skanska was looked on perhaps just a bit more favorably because of considerations related to, I think as they phrase it, hydrology or, or water getting to, to the field as well as the project management team having a more local base, which might improve their understanding of what it is that we're looking for as a district. Is that, is that correct?
I think that's, that's part of it. There were a couple of other elements that I'll add to it. One was that Skanska offered in addition to the hydrology, you know, some possibilities around soil and sod use, you know, went so far as to say that they might even recommend sod so that we could make use of the field more quickly. They knew that that was an issue for us and that we might want to get on the field and they would want to see that happen. Colliers spoke about the field and natural grass and that, that kind of thing, but in a, in a more of a lessons learned from mistakes that had happened in the past with their past projects rather than here's what we would recommend to make this work really successfully. So the Skanska presentation and the way they spoke about the project appeared to be more forward-thinking about the project itself. Whereas I would say Colliers spoke about some of their other projects, but didn't, even though they had a landscape architect on the call, didn't offer a lot of information about how they might think about the soils and the seeding and sod and, and those kinds of things. So I think that was another reason that Skanska came out a little bit ahead on, in my, in my book. Yeah, Jake?
Carrie, I, I would just add a couple of things to, to what you and Steve have mentioned. Skanska came in with a very, very specific timeline. That was relative not only to making sure that we have the materials that we need, but making sure that we're going out for materials in a, in a timely fashion that makes sense from not only a supply chain perspective, from a cost perspective at certain points of the year. And then looking at, at getting really everything ready to go out to bid at a point in time where the firms that will be bidding to do the actual work are, are receptive and ready to, to leap into accepting programs, you know, all the way through to, to, to working backward from when we want this, these fields and this track to actually be in use. They came in with, I felt, and I, I think the finance subcommittee would agree, they talked about very specific natural turf experiences that were positive, some of which I am personally familiar with. They spoke about very specific companies that do this work. They spoke about the importance of, of considering black and women, black and minority-owned subcontractors to do this work, which I know the state holds in high regard, and I would go out on a limb and say we would hold that in high regard as well, were they to get us to be able to do business with, with companies that represent the diversity that the, that the district values. And I think just overall, we, we're very fortunate, circling back to what Steve said, we had two excellent companies that, that did excellent presentations. All yours is, their team would be based out of the Pioneer Valley, I think, back along. Carrie said the team we'll be working with is, I think, the, probably the greatest distances, Pittsfield and Adams with, with significant repertai, representation right here in Williamstown. I know for a fact, based on, on a, a large past experience that when they say they are available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they are indeed available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And they just, they just, looking at my scoring sheet, it was, it, it was close, but it was also clear that Skanska really was going to deliver us the, 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 what, what we believe to be the best, the best representation and moving forward with this.
Thank you, Jake. Jose, did you have another question?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up from what we heard from Jake and, and I heard you mention it, Jake. I just wanted to give us a chance to, to be more explicit about particular a potential issue. One of the, seems like key pieces of the Colliers' presentation was focused on cost overrun prevention. What can you, what can you speak to whether and how Skanska spoke to this potential, potential issue and, and their strategies to try to mitigate it?
Yeah, our, our, our questions included a question that was very specific around the, the current inflationary environment and the, the availability of materials that, that will be needed in this, but both of the, both of the companies address this. They, they both are big companies that do big projects. They, they both have, they have a vast network of suppliers that they work with. They also have really the, the latest and greatest software that, that tracks on a daily, probably an hourly basis as what the, what these things cost in different regions of the country so that they weigh the cost of materials versus the transportation of materials to try to get the client best pricing. Again, I can go back to personal experience working with Skanska for four, four and a half years on the Taconic project. Their, their ability and, and Hawkeye attention to to cost and making sure that we're building exactly what we want, but staying within the budget that we have to work with was, was clearly a top priority for them. Both companies also discussed, you know, the notion of value engineering of, you know, this is our, this is our A-plus project with everything that we want. What are some strategies to get to the A-project or the A-minus project? Not in terms of quality, but just in terms of giving up things that we want. Both of them are vastly experienced with that again. But, but I've, I have seen that at work and seen it at work powerfully and positively with, with Skanska.
I would just add, and then I'll go to you, Joe, that Skanska also asked what our budget was. So in addition to like preemptively providing a timeline, you know, the budget ish, you know, question would have come up with whoever we hired, but they, that was like the one question they had, like, what's your budget? And then we, they felt they seemed to think they could do what we wanted within that budget.
And, and so both companies addressed it. I, I personally felt like Skanska addressed the question in perhaps a way that's more custom to this type of project where, where our costs are really locked in at the point where bids are coming in from contractors. As long as we don't later change the scope of the project, add things midstream. And so Skanska spent far more time talking about designer selection, value engineering process, trying to understand where the markets for key materials were headed prior to going out to bid so that you could more accurately estimate costs and understand where bids most likely would come in. And that, that collectively for me was, it was a very comforting segment where those are all the things where I know that that's an integral part of getting the project done for the right price. But they actually were demonstrating the team that they have that does this every day, that was going to be focused on all of those aspects in a way that, that I will, I, I mentioned it to the school committee members at the end of the meeting that with both firms, I, I definitely slept better last night knowing that one of the two of them would be leading the way with this project. It, it, it's a, it's a real comfort, so I think we'll be in good hands in, in any case.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that Colliers was at a little bit of a disadvantage because one of their team members was sick and unable to make the interview and we did ask them to press on with the interview in the absence of, you know, someone who, who could have very well been key to their team. And so that is something that I think we tried to take into account and we tried to really, you know, fully understand, but at the same time we're on a timeline ourselves. We needed to meet this meeting and then, you know, be able to move forward. Does anyone else have questions? Jose, I see your hand is up. Yeah, Christina.
I don't know if this is a question for now, so you can tell me if it needs to be discussed later, but I was just curious about that comment that Steve made about the number of tracks. Is that, does that have to do with our ability to host track meets?
Yeah, that's a tournament. They weren't exactly sure. I'm not sure if anyone has confirmed those. Yeah.
I, I, as, as we were discussing that, that granular detail with, with one of the, the firms that we were interviewing, it was mentioned that, you know, one of the, one of the value engineering pieces is to go, you know, the fewer lanes you do on a track, the, the lower the cost. One of the candidates mentioned that it, it was possible that for state tournament track meets, so for getting into, you know, the season that we're in now, you potentially need nine lanes. I went on Google Maps last night and, and looked at the places that I know I traveled to last year, following my daughter around through to the, to the state track meet in the eastern part of the state. All of those tracks had eight lanes. And thank you, Google Maps, that you can go on and zoom in and actually count the lanes. So, so that was really around our ability to host meets beyond Berkshire County and Pioneer Valley.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Julia or Curtis, do either of you have questions? No? Okay. Jose?
Thanks, Carrie. This question is just about the process moving forward if the school committee votes to support this ranking. What are our next steps all the way through to, you know, to complete, to, to, through to, to the completion of the project?
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
So next step immediately following this vote is to negotiate a contract with the O P M, get them, get them on board. Immediately following that, we would work with the O P M to develop a request for services or architecture and design. We would need to get that posted up. Promote that posting with all of the firms that we would hope would, would submit responses. Once we receive those responses, we would go through a qualifications-based selection process. It's very similar to what we're doing here for an O P M with a key difference that we would expect to involve the O P M that we hired to help that and determine qualifications, compare qualifications between designers who submit responses. We would then complete a ranking similar to what we're doing here for an O P M, but we'd be doing it for an architecture firm. At that point, once we have that ranking, we would do a negotiation with the design firm, similar to what we're about to do with an O P M. Once the design firm is hired, we would immediately move into a design process that I believe, given the history that we already have, we would front-load information that we already know about what we know to be true and where we feel like there are question marks. We would make sure that we had updated engineering, site engineering and, and other, other steps in place. We would ask the design firm and the O P M to work with us, some, either the full school committee or a subset of the school committee, along with our athletic director, coaches, looking at the variety of choices that we have in front of us, you know, ranging from number of lanes on the track, layout of the track around the field such that you can support the, the correct field events. We would, we would look at light choices. We would look at the color of the track. You know, one of the things that Skanska talked about last night was just by changing from being determined to have a blue track that matched school colors, instead going with the straight black track that did not require all the dye that a blue track does. That, that on a recent project saved two hundred thousand dollars, you know, so we would be looking at those types of things as we walk through a design process. Eventually, we would come to have all of the detail that we need and want in order for the designer to convert everything that we, that we had there into a detailed set of design specifications ready for a bid. That, we hope that we hit that point by middle of the fall, late fall. That way they have a month or two to get to the point where something's ready to be approved to go out to bid. We would lean heavily on our O P M to help ensure that the design specifications were done with a high level of specificity and fidelity so that they were paying attention to what's going to happen when this goes out. Is everybody going to know what they're bidding on? Are we going to get best pricing? Are we putting flexibility into places where rather than pigeonholing ourselves into a certain type of steel, do we give enough flexibility to make it so that two or three different types of steel based on current market prices can be determined? You know, like that's where we'd be hoping that they would be paying close attention there. Then that would go out to bid. We would give an appropriate amount of time for contractors to bid. Skanska last night within their presentation talked about ideal timing right now being get it out in January and early January. Have bids back by sometime in February and then that to them was ideal timing for contractors have finished out their work this year. They're sharpening their pencils for work next year. They're not already loaded up with work for next year. And hopefully markets have calmed down to the point where you're getting real prices as opposed to, this is so far out in the future that I have no idea what it's going to cost on the bid high to protect myself. So bids come in in February. At that point, that selection is really just based on, do they have the necessary qualifications and what's the lowest price? So that's not an interview process similar to the one that, that we've got here and that we will have for the design firm. Once the contractor is selected, we would hope that we'd be slotted to begin construction in March or April. that we'd be slotted to begin construction in March or April, really as soon as construction can start. And then we'd we'd be hoping pushing to to have as much of that project available for the August, September timeframe as as possible. SCANSKA did note that in that in their expert opinion, if SOD is laid down in July, in June, July, you really shouldn't be playing on it in August, September, October. So they would recommend that you wait until the following year to play on it. I think that will be something that that will be talked about and we will have all the experts that we need at the table to do it. But at that point, everything will be commissioned, ready in use in the third, fourth quarter of 2023 and then early 2024. Sorry for the long winded monologue.
No, I was just, that's super helpful. Sorry, Carrie, I just wanted to make sure I understood something that Joe said. And then very quick question. Sounds like if if all goes well, well, according to what you just told us, we we would likely have a a playing surface ready roughly roughly two years from now, something like that. Is that is that is that right?
We would hopefully have a track ready a year and a few months from now. And we would have a playing field in the center of that track ready. Per SCANSKA's recommendation last night, we should not think of that as being ready until one or two growing seasons have passed, and a growing season being either fall or spring or so. They would say, if you can hold off of it for the fall, maybe hold off of it for the spring, then have it be ready. But I think that's that's something for conversation and for, you know, trying to understand what the pluses and minuses are.
Yeah, thank you.
And the one thing I would add to that, I believe it was SCANSKA talked about creating learning opportunities because of the proximity to where our students are going to be, you know, when we were building the building, that wasn't as possible as we would have liked it to be, but they seem to have ideas already about how they could have students participate and had done so in Pittsfield, whether it was the environmental studies classes or some of the student clubs. And they were very interested in the educational opportunities that this project might provide. Julia.
I couple of things. One, I I really just want to express gratitude for the amount of thinking and work and organization that's gone into this, both to the administration and to the finance committee and for the clarity with why you're providing this recommendation. I have a question about, Joe, in that long and important and useful and helpful description of what's coming, the very first step. But I I think I heard you say, we negotiate with SCANSKA, and if we can't come to a an agreement, then you would go to Collier. And I I guess and I understand that the importance is going for quality over cost, but how do you know it's a fair price?
Within the world of OPM services, there is a standard percentage as a portion or as a relative to the overall construction value that is that is commonly used. But the other thing, the other aspect that I think will come into play here, and I don't mean to be negotiating on TV, but the degree to which we will want somebody on site, you know, if it was a building project like the Mount Greilock Regional School Building Project or the Teconic Building Project, you have somebody on site from your OPM for every minute that a construction worker is there. Whether or not that is something that we require and need for this project, I think could yield some some amount of cost difference. And and I think both firms had, they came in last night and they presented, you know, hints of recommendations as to how they would view the degree to which they needed to pay to have somebody there on site at all times. Both of them indicated that they did not think that onsite at all times was absolutely necessary. And and I think that's that's an important thing to have the conversation with while you're determining what you expect to be paying somebody or a firm. You know, in terms of other flexibility within what ends up being negotiated, as a part of that request for services, we did have a fairly standard OPM contract that's that was embedded in that request for services that was vetted by our council. It was largely identical to what we have used in the past with OPMs. And it's similar to what so what everybody uses. So really, it's going to come down to what are they going to declare their hourly rates to be? What does that mean for what they want to declare their overall project fees to be? And how they present the the needs for various team members to be to be on site? So and then the the rationale behind saying that you negotiate with your first ranked, and if you can't, then you move on to your second ranked. Part of it is just practical that if for some reason the first ranked is unreasonable, you you want to not have to redo an entire process if you have another viable candidate. Another part is that that's just within the state, the state of Massachusetts recommended path for developing a request for services ranking and then negotiating a contract. That's what they also recommend to every municipal entity as as the way to do business. So part of that that is also just taking the state's best practices, recommendations and and using them.
Thank you.
All right. So if there is no further discussion or any other questions, Christina, is the school committee ready to vote?
Yes.
Oh, and I?
Henry, I.
Constancy, I.
Open by an I.
Green eye.
Milla, I.
Okay, that motion passes. Carrie, do did do we need to, Joe mentioned needing to discuss something else? Is that something that needs to be voted as well?
I I don't know that it needs to be voted. I think we just need to agree on an understanding or have a common understanding of who is going to negotiate the contract. I would recommend that we have Joe negotiate the contract. And I guess it's a question of, I mean, the contract needs to be signed by the superintendent and the chair of the school committee, right? And the contract itself shouldn't need a vote by any committee because we've already voted on the candidate with the understanding that pending caught pending successful negotiations. I mean, that's implicit in the vote. So I think it's just a matter of negotiating the contract, which if Joe is willing to do it, that would be great. And then you and Jake signing it. And then we're moving forward. I think that's all that needs to be done. Joe, is that, are you amenable to doing that part of the process?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Julia.
I it feels a little weird to not have the school committee vote on the final number. And maybe I'm just overly cautious, but I'd be, I'm interested in how how we think about that. Or what precedent we may have for not approving a final budget number of the magnitude that I anticipate this would have.
So I'm sorry, are you asking me? So my my view is that the number is going to be within the range that I think Joe might have said yesterday was 3% of the overall budget. And I think the overall budget was 2.2 million-ish, right? So 3% of 2.2-ish million is kind of the range that we're talking about. I think in delegating the negotiation of a contract where we already know what the range is going to be, my sense is that that's giving the party that you're delegating to the authority to finalize it. And that means that it doesn't need another vote by the school committee. But if the committee would prefer to have eyes on that final number just to bless it or and I don't think we're going to argue with it, right? We're not going to contest a contract that's been negotiated by our business manager and with the oversight of our superintendent and then reviewed by our school committee chair. So it just didn't seem necessary to me to have a have a vote, a formal vote on that. This is the formal vote. But that said, as I said before, if you would like to have eyes on the contract, know what it is before it is fully executed, then we can schedule another meeting to do that. What do other people think about this? Yeah, Steve?
I mean, I always love having meetings and taking notes. I don't mind having another one. I would be fine in delegating the ability to Joe to negotiate. Let's round up a little bit, you know, anything more than, say, $70,000, he needs to come back to us. And yeah, this does not mean I want to pay $70,000 for this, but just anything in that range, I think is fine. I do see the concerns about, you know, a complete blank check with, you know, the school committee not seeing, and all of a sudden it comes in, I know you're not going to do this to it, you know, $140,000. And so I like saying, you know, up to $70,000, you don't need to come back to us.
Yeah, Joe.
I just think I think it's likely that any contract will end up having some terms around added hours billed at a certain rate upon request, things like that, that might make it difficult to say, like, this is a $70,000 contract. So I I wouldn't want people to feel as though something was one thing and then it's another thing. So it if if the committee would like to, maybe it makes sense to delegate to the finance subcommittee, so it's only three people who are meeting to to do the final review and sign off on on a contract. But yeah, I I'm I'm not opposing anything. I'm just saying I I would have concerns about just a simple number being the the thing that is used to determine whether or not it's a it's valid to go through without an additional vote.
Julia.
Um, I just wanted to, I thank you, Joe, for making that clarification. And thank you, Steve, for thinking about that, like a not to exceed type idea. We do have, I don't know that how quickly it all needs to happen, but we do have a school committee meeting on June 6th. So I don't, or 8th. So I don't know if that actually means a separate extra meeting that that's there. And it feels like there are others, this feels more consistent with how we've handled other potentially large financial encumbrances, especially as I think about, like, we have delegated negotiating with the union, you know, to the to the leadership, and then we approve what's happened. And so I it just feels more consistent that we weigh in and are there, you know, I I trust, it's not that I don't trust people, I just feel like that's our part of our role as fiduciary, you know, with our fiduciary responsibility.
So how does the meeting next week work with the time? Well, it's not next week, it's the week after. So that might hold things up a little bit. I mean, it's
I think that if we're able to come to terms quickly, it might be nice to have a a quick one agenda item meeting scheduled. And I and I think we'll get a feel for that by Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. So if it makes sense to just have have a meeting that where the that draft contract can be distributed ahead of time and people can log on and say yes or no, that that might be a a way to split the difference a bit, just because I think everybody does want to make sure that we move forward with developing a designer request for services ASAP.
So there's a policy subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, June 1st at 5:00 PM. So maybe we could do something on either end of that. So there are already three of us who are meeting. It wouldn't be part of the policy subcommittee, but it could be tacked on. So that's an option. If we wanted to.
There's also a, there's also a finance subcommittee meeting next Thursday, which which might be a good chance to have the finance subcommittee do a quick check and then have the full school committee sign on to do to do its part. That's the timeline that I was kind of hoping. Honestly, we would be ready with with something. Because we have Memorial Day coming up, so maybe things won't get done until Tuesday.
Great. So that would mean the school committee should we would need at least one other member of the school committee. Should we say 5 o'clock on June 1st?
June 1st or June 2nd?
So sorry, going back and forth. So June 2nd. So finance subcommittee meets at 4 o'clock on June 2nd. I don't think we need a full hour.
Meeting at 4:00 PM.
So everybody's reviewing it at the same time?
Yeah.
I think I have a conflict. I can do five, but I can't do four. But that doesn't, you know, I don't have to be there if there are enough members who can do four.
Or if people are fine with the finance subcommittee just reviewing it.
So that's one option to just have the finance subcommittee review it and kind of either vote or just say, yeah, this looks fine. There's nothing out of the ordinary. Or the finance subcommittee can review it, and then the school committee can vote based on the recommendation from the finance subcommittee. Or the school committee and the finance subcommittee can both review it. I mean, just the school committee can review it and we vote. I mean, it's really whatever you guys want to do. But we have a meeting scheduled at 4 o'clock on June 2nd. We should make use of that somehow.
I'm fine with delegating it to the finance committee.
And not having the school committee vote on it?
Right.
Okay.
I think that's enough eyes on the I think it's enough eyes on it. And then in the end, I have to review it as well. So.
Yep.
That works. That satisfies my
Okay. Great, great. Thank you, Julia. That that's a really good suggestion. And thank you, Joe and Steve and everybody else who waited on that. So, yes, so we'll add that to the finance committee agenda. And Joe now has a deadline for accomplishing the task.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so next up on the agenda is a Williamstown Elementary School field trip approval. Is that you, Jake?
Yes, you approved this at the last school committee meeting, but because of some logistical challenges, where just the the West 6th grade folks are changing from a single date where the students were going to Six Flags, The Great Escape, and then taking a cruise on Lake George. They are changing it to accommodate the everything that needed to be accommodated, that the kids will be traveling to Six Flags on Friday, June 10. And then the following week, they'll be traveling up for the afternoon and evening on June 16th for a dinner cruise on Lake George. And so that's that's really the change, but but we wanted to bring it back before you, since we had this meeting already scheduled. And I think just for form, that probably requires a vote.
Okay.
So is that is that in our packet? So is that is that in our packet, any kind of form or?
No, I don't know. I, we have the form from the first time around and we we have the revised form or we're awaiting the revised form because this was a pretty quick page. I told Cindy I would just walk everybody through it. Really, same chaperones, same means of transportation to get up there. This one, the evening, the on the 16th, it will be a lateish return home. So we wanted to get it back in front of you.
Who is doing the transportation?
I would need to go back and look at the original form, Carrie. I would believe that it's a charter bus for a 6th grade trip, but I don't have the original form right in front of me.
I'll see if I can find it.
Steve?
And then I assume the additional cost for doing two trips is still within the budget that the 6th graders have.
It's within the budget that that there that's available. Yes.
So are you looking for a vote to support the revised itinerary of the 6th grade? I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Can we go? I want to go on a cruise.
We we could, if you if you want to be a chaperone, I can certainly ask. Just remember, you asked for it. Julia?
Jake, when you say they're coming home late, I know that there's like hours through the late night, early morning where it's where, but there's a higher preponderance of buses that have accidents. So I just want to know how late and if we're like safely within that.
Yeah, I don't have that right in front of me. It was not late enough that I was concerned about that.
Okay, I mean, they're 6th graders, so they shouldn't be out too late, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Oh, and I?
Henry, I.
Constancy, no.
Elf and by an eye.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
That motion passes. Thank you. Uh, I do not have any other items for discussion. So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
They moved.
Julia moves, and I think Curtis beat you, Steve. Curtis second.
You may think that, but as the typist.
I guess we'll find out when the minutes are published.
All in favor?
Oh, and I?
Henry, I.
Constancy, no.
Elf and by an eye.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes and we are adjourned at 5:49. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you so much.